Okay, so I'll call to order this September 3rd, 2020 Regular Board Work Session. I have all board members in attendance except for Carla Paluso. So with that, we have a meeting agenda. Is there motion?
Move to approve the agendas presented.
Okay.
Okay, moved by Chris, seconded by Matt to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any opposed? Okay. As just a proceed.
It's just to confirm, did I only slummed?
I only saw three ayes.
And I heard another eye. I saw Chris raise her hand. I did not hear if everyone actually said aye for that.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, perfect. Thank you guys.
Right, so that moves us into discussion items. Item B1 is Instructional Calendars Update, and that is Mr. Cook.
Thank you Chair. An informational item, we wanted to update the board and make sure you're aware, we're about to release new instructional calendars to the community based on the changes we've made for comprehensive distance learning. It are, just to be transparent, our main worry is how quickly we had to produce these calendars and would we miss something as well? We believe we've caught all the details. We spent a lot of time doing this last week and want to make you aware that they're going out. Some of the highlights that you'll see and should know are, they do meet ODE requirements. We're meeting our instructional time via this calendar. We have moved to quarters for grading as opposed to semesters at the high school and trimesters at the middle school and elementary. A lot of that is related to bringing the K-12 calendars into alignment because we had to go to quarters at the high school based on the comprehensive distance learning schedules we put in place or are putting in place. And then for families, to bring those into alignment was a priority as well. Also, it brings in PD and other opportunities for us to align district-wide from an operations and in a teaching and learning standpoint. We have we also have some time built in there for when Canvas is able to come onboard. We are hoping for the first week of October, so there's a day of PD where students will not be in school. I believe that's October 7th, whatever that Thursday is that first week. I'm not looking at it right now. And it does reflect that we have four instructional days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Wednesday has some synchronous learning in the morning, SEL check-in for all kids, five days a week including Wednesday, and some applied learning time for students, but it's also PD, prep time for teachers, professional development, and a lot of teacher collaboration time which is required by ODE for us to be able to collaborate, look at grades, and see how students are performing. I think that covers most of the changes, but it is substantively different than what we handed out in June, given our decision in late July.
John, is Wednesdays that day that when the kids are going to be doing applied learning, is that also when teachers are expected to do outreach to families or check-ins or?
I would want to go back to the actual building calendar, so I'm going to speak a little bit without having reviewed those tonight. Myra, take it with a grain of salt. The way the Wednesday will be set up for teachers is there's a prep time in the morning, there's also the SEL check-in, then there's PD and collaboration time. After lunch, there is also more collaboration time and then teacher prep time. The parent reach-out and student engagement time is scheduled Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and that's more toward the end of the day, every day of the week, except Wednesday. Does that help? No, not true. Carla's correcting me on that.
It is on Wednesday. It's just moved to after, right after lunch on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Okay, we wanted you guys to know because we anticipate questions.
When does this go out?
I haven't discussed that with Lisa yet, so Lisa, if you want to, what do you think?
My, my belief is that because we have an original, we have an agreement with the periods of the day and follow-up with the association that it should probably be going out as soon as possible. I would say at the latest, it would be Tuesday of this next week.
Okay. Chris?
Um, I try not to read a lot of the social media comments, but a couple of them do come through pretty frequently that I have not really seen addressed in anybody's, not just ours, not anybody's, but um, but what's going to happen for parents who are having to work, who are not going to be home with their kids? How are we still sort of morphing that? Because I think that's the biggest angst that I'm seeing people have.
It is, and it was addressed when we spoke with the city council earlier this week. They had the same questions because they hear it in the community. The, the, I think the way I would phrase it is this, we know that consistency and expectations for our students to show up at a specific time really does produce stronger engagement. We saw that this summer when we made an opportunity for them to come or not come, those that had made the commitment to come finished and, and increased their rates of getting their, their completes, their incompletes recovered. So we have that in the schedule, but whenever there is synchronous learning, which is that period of the day, that is recorded and it is saved. So then those that are working from home, that have younger children, that know that maybe some of the strong, the, the learning and support is in the evenings, we will have that available and it will count towards credit for engagement and success in their classes. So there's really two ways of handling it and we will start to relieve that as we put that out and remind people. It's one of those catch-22s. You want to be, hey, consistency helps, but if that's the consistency that you're going to be with your child every day, helping them log on at a different time, then those are the things that teachers and principals in our schools will help with.
So teachers have been given guidelines on the recording, not to have kids' faces and all that kind of stuff?
The, the, the recordings and things are similar to what we did last year. We do make sure that we have the recommendation and requirements. We've gone through the Google meets. We're going to keep with Google meets even when we make that transition, and so those things are covered within that training.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Now, the next item is English Language Learner Annual Report, and this has Karina's name.
Yeah, Chair and members of the board, I'm going to give you a little update on the English Language Learner report that came out from ODE. It's a little different than it was in past years for a couple of reasons. Let me try and share my screen and hopefully it all works. Let's give it a, let's give it a shot. The thing is, I won't be able to see you once I start sharing my screen, so I'm going to ask my colleagues that if something goes awry, send me a text because I won't be able to read faces, which is just really kind of odd for me, but I'm going to, I'll start right now. There we go. I'm hoping you are seeing my screen now.
Not yet, but soon.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, no.
Does that? Let's try it again. Always takes a couple tries. Is that doing it?
Not yet.
Sarah, does she have the ability to take the screen or is it sometimes?
She should, yeah. I've marked it so that all.
All right, Karina, now up. Hey, okay, sorry, lots of delays. Thank you for your patience. So I wanted to start by saying this is a report that we've historically, I've historically been asked to review with the board. I think this is the fourth year. And the reason is, in 2015, the legislature approved some funding. They ended up calling it House Bill 3499 for the specific purpose of improving the educational opportunities and outcomes for English learners. Attached to that funding was a requirement that boards receive a presentation to update them on how English language learners are doing both statewide and at their individual districts. So this is the fourth time, for those of you who've been on the board, it may be the first time for some of you. If the idea was, we know that this is a group of students who faces a great deal of challenges at schools and they looked at four measures. They looked at proficiency in English, they looked at graduation rate, they looked at math in particular because that has been an area of concern, and then post-secondary involvement, enrollment, I'm sorry. At that time, we were identified using some, those four criteria. You can see I kind of put a little red circle around where we were. We just barely qualified for receiving support. We fell just under the cut where OD had decided districts would need support. So we were identified to receive targeted funds from HB 3499. Some neighboring districts who faced greater challenges were actually, they received more funds, but they were actually a little bit more hot water, you might say. So I want to remind everyone of how we use the funds and then tell you about what's happening with the report. When we reviewed our data at that time, it was very clear to us that the biggest area of concern for Gresham Barlow School District was the performance of our English language learners in math. So we selected math as our target area of focus for those funds and we have, I think we've had a lot of success. Our E Tosa Shannon Parvenkin, who works at the secondary math and science content areas, has done amazing work with our math teachers in the areas of professional learning, coaching, feedback, helping them really use Ready Math and Eye Ready Math effectively for our English language learners. The focus has been around community, identity, routines for engagement, so students are much more involved in learning, academic optimism, and then we've brought in teacher clarity as well. So that's been the focus of the work that we've done with this extra funding that we received. It's about $80,000 a year. It's not a ton of money, but it's been nice. Then a couple of years ago, I think many of you are aware, we added dual language and we were able to add this secondary goal to our grant and use some of the funding for that. The goals there have been to really advance the understanding of the goals of dual, dual language, which are bilingualism and biliteracy, academic achievement and cultural competence. We've done a lot of work on what do instructional practices look, look like when we're doing Spanish literacy development and also community building. So those were the main focus activities for those funds. And it all, I put this in here because this really does all align with our learning model. I talked a little bit about clarity. Definitely in the culturally responsive piece and the involvement of the community has been a part of it as well. So you received, I believe Sarah attached for you a copy of the report that ODE sent out in June. The frustrating part is usually with that report comes a component that allows us to compare data between districts. And I often create a couple of slides and we talk about how we are performing in relation to other districts. OD does not have that piece of the report ready right now, so I ask for your patience and when that part comes, I will ask for a little bit of time and give you a duck, an update. That data is not available. In addition to that, I often also bring you some very current data related to SBA in math, middle school math in particular, because that's a goal. As you well know, that data is also not available because we didn't administer SBA in math. So really, this is meant to be a big picture overview to let you know we're continuing this work through December of this year. So December 30th, 2020 will be the end of our HB 3499 grant. At this time, OD does not have plans to sort of renew the grant for anyone that I know of. They may be shifting how they use those funds. A lot is up in the air, as, as we all know. So we will continue to use, excuse me, those funds for the same two goals, the middle school math professional learning and the DLI, and actually professional learning was going on as recently as last week for both of those groups of teachers. So that's, that's really my, my big picture. I feel like we are doing support where the anecdotal data, the reflection data, the survey data is looking good. I just wish I had some more concrete student data and I just don't at this time. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to.
Oh, I do, Karina.
Yeah, Chris?
Um, so I know we didn't do smarter balance this year. The teachers were still doing progress learning. So are there other ways that we can at least internally say this is working, this isn't, in particular, working with the remote component of this, distance learning? How are we just kind of making sure that we're staying at least on target as best we can?
I, I hear you, Chris. I don't have an easy answer, to be honest with you. We're certainly trying to figure out, especially now in the fall, right, where our distance learning is much more comprehensive, to really get some of those formative assessments out. In the spring, that was quite a challenge. The distance learning just had different expectations and not as robust of a set of instructional practices at that time, but I'm certainly working with Shannon and others to think about what are some ways we can really monitor and adjust based on what we're seeing students be able to do. And it's exciting because I know today Ready Math was doing presentations for both elementary and middle and I, so I know that that's continuing and we're trying to get better and better at how to really pull in and embed some of that in the comprehensive distance learning model.
Karina, this is Matt. How are you doing?
Good, how are you, Matt?
Good, thanks for the presentation. Two questions. First one, it was on the first slide, you talked about one of the metrics that was used was adjusted fifth year. What is that?
Um, right, so there's a couple ways to look at graduation and one is the four-year, right, so which is the typical course. Now, it's not unusual for some of our English language learners, particularly those who may have been more recent arrivals to the US to take that additional year to graduate. So it's actually more realistic to look at that five-year opportunity for graduation.
It's just strictly a five-year graduation rate, okay, because it said adjusted. I thought maybe there was some magical formula like in the state school fund or something like that.
No, I think adjustment and I would, Carla or John could, could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the adjusted is sometimes they go back in and there are some things that happen in summer and so on and so forth, and they kind of get like the complete total. So I believe that's what that means on that slide.
I like that, that we're actually measuring on a graduation rate of some sort and not the four-year. That's, so that's actually good. The last question relates to the ending of the grant and that we're going to be using this through December 31st. What's, what's the talk for continuing this program of some sort in the general budget?
Yeah, well, Matt, as, as you know, we've made a commitment to dual language, so we know that that dual language work will continue. So that'll mean professional learning-wise, we're going to have to be strategic and I will work with Lisa on making sure that we can embed those professional learning needs for DLI teachers within our current budget. And I think, you know, the, the idea behind professional learning is you're investing in your teachers, right? So professional learning doesn't go away once you've experienced it. So it'll be a matter of continuing to reflect on those practices and refine those practices, but instead of doing it through perhaps additional time available, it would be bringing it into our PLC conversations and our regularly scheduled like Wednesday or CNI Day professional learning.
So you're not separated now, you're just integrating it into the process. That's great, thanks.
Now that we've built that background, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Of course. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I know sometime in the beginning of the summer, we talked about what EL instruction would look like during comprehensive distance learning. I'm wondering if you can give us an update.
Oh, my goodness, Matt, I wish I had an easy answer. Um, I just spent three hours with my elementary teachers today and then three hours with my secondary teachers. I can tell you that EL teachers are very excited. Let's start with the elementary level. In the spring, we were trying not to complicate things for teachers and so we, and for students. And so in many situations, our EL teachers supported their colleagues but didn't really have direct instructional contact with students. It, it was just too much to ask students to do. But we are definitely having EL teachers work with students on small groups in addition to collaborating, which means those students will see their EL teachers on a regular basis and get ongoing language development support. In addition to the work that EL teachers will be doing with classroom teachers to ensure that content is scaffolded so that kids will get access to grade-level content. So that's elementary level. As you might imagine, secondary level, it's a bit more complex. Part of it is because of the periods that we're offering and not offering. So we're really looking at it might have kind of in a tiered level. So some kids will be directly involved in ELD courses right now, right in this quarter. For those kids that aren't, we're looking carefully at opportunities to co-teach, particularly with a focus on language arts when at all possible, right, because that interface between language arts and, and ELD is really strong. And then the third tier is to use our instructional assistance to create some breakout group opportunities and review opportunities within content areas for our students who have the greatest need linguistically. Does that help a little bit?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. May I?
Oh, sorry.
Chair Peterson?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I would actually like Karina to share a little bit about the UDL and how that impacts the universal design learning and how that impacts where, without having to segment out different levels or of instruction. So that addresses a lot of things for all students. Karina, you want to share that, just a quick overview or either one of you?
Sure, so UDL, I, I think you may be familiar as universal design for learning, and that's the idea that as we create lessons, we're embedding supports right within the lesson. And the beauty of that is that the, those supports are available regardless of who the student is, right? So it could be a student who's on an IP, could be a student who's an active English learner. It could be a student who has a hard time focusing, right? There could be lots of reasons. So one of the things that we've done a lot of collaborating with, and so Lakeisha and Tracy and Michelle, is making sure that our specialists are well-versed in those UDL strategies so that as they're collaborating with other teachers, they can talk about embedding tools like, can we embed something where a student can click and have the instructions read aloud to them? Can we embed some visuals? Can we make sure there's a graphic organizers to help them get their thinking, you know, organized prior to creating a writing piece? So all of those are elements of universally designed instruction that we really are trying to weave in so that they're there as a support. If a student doesn't need it, they might not even notice it. But for students, some students, it could make the difference between being able to access the core content and being frustrated.
We began some of that work in the spring, so.
We did. We started it in the spring and we are bringing it right along and deepening it, and it'll definitely be a topic of professional learning and ongoing conversations during PLCs.
Thanks.
Okay.
Karina, I had just a question roughly, what percentage of our, of our students in a, in a typical year qualify as, as?
English learners?
English learners.
Um, we're looking at a district average of about 11%. There's a wide range, Blake, from school to school. So at some of our elementary schools, we're talking 25 to maybe 30 to 35% English language learners. We have a couple of schools, and I think those of you who know the district geography can guess which ones that have less than 5% English learners. So it just really varies.
Okay. Just from a so this year, typically those students, unless they're recent arrivals, are identified at the elementary level, probably kindergarten or first grade when they first, how does that look like this year?
Now?
What, what does that referral and, and connection look like for that family?
Blake, that's an excellent question. It's difficult to screen students when we're not seeing them, right? It's all remote. So OD actually has some guidance around how we go about temporarily identifying English learners until such a time as we can see them in person and make that final identification. It's called remote identification. And really what it relies on, Blake, you may remember, some of you from enrolling your, registering your students for school, that there are some language questions. So we refer to those as a language use survey. So EL teachers will be looking at the results of those language use questions and if a parent identified another language in their household, they will be doing some follow-up conversations to determine whether that particular student might benefit from EL support, at least temporarily, until we can do an assessment.
And so the staff member responsible is from the district office or is that the, the teacher in the classroom or somewhere, or is that Shannon?
That's a great question. That's handled at the school level, but of course, myself and the two EL Toses are always there for support. But the schools have access to that information via synergy and that's their starting point.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions, board? Okay, Karina, thank you for the update.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, well, Karina gets selfish and stops sharing.
I'm trying to like stop my buttons here. There it is.
We've got future board agenda topics. So a couple of things, board, one, Myra and Myra put together a preliminary anti-racism resolution that mirrored the letter we we composed back in April or May, I believe is when we put that together. Maybe it was June. That link was sent out to everybody. It's a shared document. Please try to provide some feedback in any way that you can. So if you're most comfortable printing it off and then marking it up and just giving it to Myra and myself, we will take that on of just compiling comments and then it'll be a topic of conversation at our September 17th work session.
Also, if you want to do it over the phone, if you want to have a conversation about it, I'm, I'm open to that as well. Like if you want to provide your feedback that way.
And as am I, but but Myra's smarter and funner to talk to, so I understand. So, but September 17th, we're going to talk through that and I'd like to get that resolution prepared for October's meeting, reading it into the record for a public meeting. So your voice is very important in this conversation. And with that, so in the past, we've had a shared document to present agenda items and that didn't work great. So we'd like to use this future board agenda items as a, as a as a mechanism to, to nominate and kind of get a preliminary idea of what we want to talk about over the course of the year, especially remotely. It's going to be a little bit clunky, but we're going to do our best to, to get the agenda filled out with the items that are important to, to our students. So with that, just a reminder of Robert's rules, an agenda item requires two people. Two people to be interested in it on a board means that it's worth discussing as an agenda item, okay? Myra and I are ultimately responsible for putting stuff on the agenda, as in filling it out mechanically, but it is for the board to determine what we talk about and it's up to two people on the board to, to nominate and, and say this is important. So use this as a means of doing it, if not today, then going forward. Chris has her hand up and she's got the big screen, so I'm going to see that one right away.
Ooh, okay. Um, I don't think I don't think that this is a moving forward topic. I think it's more tonight topic that, if I missed an email, I'm sorry. When we were finishing the strategic planning meeting, we talked about attendance at the OSBA virtual conference this year. What's the deadline to sign up? And are we just, are we going to do it if people have an opportunity to do it? Or what was sort of our, we've done the conference before. We haven't voted on whether or not we attended, but I wasn't sure what we left it after the strategic planning meeting.
I know registration for that doesn't actually open till September 14th, but I'm not sure what the closing date is for it. But there just was an email like today or yesterday that said the registration will open up September 14th.
So can we put that on next meeting's agenda then to talk about our attendance and what that means, what that looks like?
I would also like to talk about that, Chris. So yes, it's on. We'll get it handled because of timeliness, September 17th. Sarah, could you include that on the agenda, please?
Yes, I'll get it added.
Thanks. Okay, so anti-resolution, or anti-racism resolution is a shared doc. One thing that Sarah is going to look into with that is if there's any general OSBA guidance or other special district or municipal guidance about what goes into a resolution, how to generally construct it. In the end, it's our resolution, so we can say what we want to. But that may help some of the mechanisms of it. Kind of the, it might give us our left and right boundary, especially as it relates to the whereas and the be it resolved components. So be on the lookout for that and then fish through your email like a week to go find the shared doc, okay? And that originally came from Myra, so that's who you're going to search for.
I just found it's August 26th.
August 26th. Hey, that is like a week.
That is. Thank you. Thanks for just realized I needed to check my email more regularly.
Yeah, that's what I realized today. Then, as we look forward to, and I'll say this maybe for the public benefit at the business meeting, but September 17th, we're meeting at Barlow High School, kind of in the same way that we did at Gresham, but of course, we have less time in the day to meet. So what I'd like to do, if at all possible, is start the meeting at 5:30 with a tour that would carry us about an hour. And then we'll start our work session closer to 6:30. We're looking into food options. And we'll, so we expect that you will be fed there. So you can come straight from work if you need to, to get there at 5:30. Okay. The the other thing, and totally cut me off, somebody has a question because I'm only seeing a few of your faces. The last thing, at least for now, is, and Matt's got the big screen, and he just frightened me. So I think especially, you know, we got, we got about six months of practice during the course of a school year with the remote meeting. And as much as I would like to get into physical meeting, but I also really, really want to respect individual board member concerns over over the pandemic. So talk to me if you have any concerns. But periodically, I would like to populate our meetings or conduct our meetings at locations within the district, if only that we can meet in person, because it's a different dynamic when we meet in person. But again, if you are uncomfortable with that, you can talk to me. I will not. I'm, I'll keep it confidential, and I'm happy to kind of relent on that approach if somebody's uncomfortable with it. Just talk to me afterward. Then, being as some of our business at least, or a lot of it will be conducted remotely, I will be leaning heavily on committee work this year. I think it's the best approach to get consensus building in place. So if you're on a committee, we'll brush that off at the September 17 meeting, or we'll have it prepared. But we'll revisit those committees and start start coming up with some expectations about how we report to the board with them. I think we'll be a more effective board if we leverage committees well. And this year will be our trial run to that end. So that's all for me. Any other future board agenda topics that somebody would like to nominate?
I heard that we will be reviewing the school resource officer contract at that time as well.
Is that on the agenda, Sarah, currently?
It will be. It's just, I think you had asked for it when we were together back in July, and we had not met with them yet. And so that will be on the 17th. Update on that.
Sounds good. Sounds like we're meeting until nine o'clock that night.
Right. I was like, it looks like a full agenda.
But food, food was promised for that night, so there you go.
Yep. I'm actually excited about the food. I'm tired of my own food.
Yeah. Okay, any other agenda items?
Like to recommend for the future that hasn't been brought up yet, or?
Yes.
Okay. Something that's been kind of going around in East Portland County is that a lot of students are complaining about sexual harassment on campus. I would just like to revisit our sex ed programs. And maybe even just kind of revision it, maybe just start as early as kindergarten, like teaching consent as early as kindergarten.
Okay.
I'm interested in that topic. What is the process to review programming itself?
Yeah, so we can ask for a special presentation from the superintendent and her team related to that. Recognizing that the 17th is stacking up quickly, can we look for a time like in October, most likely? Talk through that, Amanda?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, so I'll try to get that on the agenda as well.
So there's normally a presentation, and then there's opportunities to provide guidance? Or do we update, should we update the policy that corresponds with that, like how?
Yeah, well, I think typically for something like that, that is within the operational scope with strategic implications, right? So we're in that sweet spot where we could overreach operationally, past the superintendent. Rather than, in order to protect against that, I would recommend that we have the superintendent's team show us what is currently happening. Obviously, they are very good about asking for board action where they need it. But that said, after we receive that presentation, we can have that conversation about what further actions we want to take or if we're taking further action. So I think it starts with the superintendent's preparing information for us and then us kind of processing that.
It would also be maybe helpful on that with an overview, because a lot of it is in legislation that does talk about what we do at the early grades, that it isn't just high school. It is elementary and middle school with age-appropriate conversation. And so it'd be nice to see an overview of that so that we know that it is in compliance with the legislature. And then look at our policies. They should be up to date as well, which I'm fairly certain they are, but never positive. But just getting that overview of what things are going on and what the expectation is so that we're not getting into curriculum and program, which is not the board's purview.
I had a question based on, and this could be further down the line, it could be next year. But based on just the calendar, our instructional calendar and being more inclusive of certain cultural days. I know we have a large Russian community, and there's a lot of cultural days that I heard students are missing. And so I don't know if we want to schedule a work session, maybe January, whenever this year to kind of discuss some of that and be more flexible in programming. And as well, you know, in consideration, not thinking that this is something that we'd be doing in COVID. But maybe looking at 2021, 22 academic year, 22, 23, just more strategic planning.
Yeah, I think that timing is probably, I mean, so the calendar is going out shortly.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, but I think that conversation would be a good one to have just from a strategic lens, not a not an importance, probably looking February, March-ish, if not strategic planning meeting. That might give some latitude. So Sarah, could you kind of take a note of that? Even if that Google Doc becomes just yours, so that we don't lose sight of that request?
Sure. So I think Robin had said in January, were you thinking February or March?
Well, I just wanted as a future topic. So I'll talk with I'll talk with Dr. Prayer and with Myra about when that information would be most useful for the district leadership team to make, to pivot off of it, if the board sets any guidance.
And I just thought of that because we just had, you know, the presentation today about, you know, the academic calendar. However, I think this would be like really useful to come up with like strategic academic priority plan of maybe like top priority issues that we want to tackle and create our, what would you say, our agendas or?
Yeah, so in the past, we've used a strategic planning meeting to kind of set our board calendar based on what the pressing issues were. And then we backed those dates off with informational items. We didn't have that opportunity this year. So yeah, that's well taken. How do we set our board priorities for the district? Is that kind of?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. You know, how are we setting our board priorities and the timeline so when we are able to address them?
Okay. I don't have an answer for that one. I think it begins with, it may feel like shotgun blast, but that will be Myra's and my obligation to help provide coherence to the calendar. But what I think will happen if we don't kind of have this forum is we just won't talk about the things that the board wants to talk about, needs to talk about. Or it's less likely that we'll cover them, so.
So one other thing, we didn't get to it at the strategic planning. We had a training goal last year for board members to get through some of the online work that OSBA had available. So revisit that and see if what the next steps are for the next things board members could focus on or do, just to make sure that we're staying current on our available training. So that would be something I would like to see how we're doing.
I'd agree with that as well. So let's put board goals as a future item, Sarah, on the magical spreadsheet that I am imagining in my head.
I will get it added, even if it's just my spreadsheet.
Yep, that's, that's great. And I'll periodically review with you what's still on there. Okay. We know that September's filled up for the 17th. So future board agenda items are on every meeting calendar or every meeting agenda. So if we didn't get to it tonight, let's talk about it at the next meeting. Okay? And we will try to keep this to work session, a conversation, just because it's a little bit, a little bit easier. All right. So we will join back up seven o'clock in a different room. So check your email and find the right, the right link. And I will see you in that one. We're adjourned.